Oh geez. Yeah. Yes, I have a slide. I'll check when it came out. Next time. Lovely. Good evening. And welcome to the October 15, 2024 City of Kankakee Planning Board meeting. I will call the meeting to order. We'll start out with roll call to determine if we have a quorum. Roll call. Beverly Hood, present. Deb Terrell.
Present.
Chip Roarum.
Here.
Barry McCracken.
Present.
Arthur Wax.
Here.
Susan Lopez.
Present.
Jose Arturo Barajas. Steve Case.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes for September 17, 2024. Are there any corrections, changes, or comments? Here and now, we'll go ahead and file them. Communications. Melissa.
So we still have PB 2024 4-1 Prairie Walk, which has not seen any movement but will not proceed until the council until the development agreement is completed. The same thing with the Quick Trip Platte. We are still waiting on a resubmitment from the engineering and the surveyors on that project before that goes back to city council. And then PB 2024 8-1, the map amendment for the area along East Avenue, East Hawkins and South Skyler was approved by the city council on October 7, 2024.
Thank you. Are there any additional city council actions? Other than what you just read?
Oh, no.
Thank you. New business PB 2024-9-1. A public hearing for a major variance from the side yard setback standards in the I-2 heavy industrial zoning district for the subject property commonly known as 1180 Lesko Road and 1224 Gornell Road, Kankakee, Illinois. Will the applicant for this case please come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name.
Joe Nugent.
And if you could raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And if you could tell us about your case?
I'm here tonight on behalf of Spikeball. They are, well, actually, Kankakee Spikeball, Inc. is the official name of it. They were asking for a variance that was created, for an issue that was created by previous owner Tim Lee when he sold some land to Steve Golden for the Golden Gymnastics. And we found out recently that the, there is a, on that setback on the west side of the building, which is in that shaded area on the right-hand side, is only about one foot off of where the building is, where they park. And as per the code, it's supposed to be five foot. In case if there was ever a time when this building was burnt to the ground, that they'd be able to rebuild it on the same footprint as what it is. And so they're asking for a variance to be able to, in case if that ever happens, that it wouldn't be a roadblock for them in the future. This was not an issue that was created by them, by any of the property owners at this time now either, too. So it wouldn't change any of the parking for Golden's Gymnastics because I was just over there the other day and they definitely need the parking and the rest of it, too. This is just in case if there would be ever anything that would happen and they would be able to use the same footprint where they have now.
Commissioners, any questions? Any, were there any communications on this case?
We had phone calls from two representatives. One from, I believe, the property to the south owned by the David Ruder Trust. Representatives from that property owner. And then also from the Goldens. They stopped by the office to ask about the case. And I think both property owners thought that there might be a proposal for some sort of development on the site. But when I explained to them what the case was for, they had no further questions and they were fine with the request. And then there were two people that were here before the meeting started and they had the same thing. They were another property owner to the south. I did not catch their names, but they had the same concern. And when I explained it to them, they left.
Okay. All right.
This sounds like a classic hardship not created by the property owner. And I, it feels to me like, you know, they need to have a reasonable assurance that if anything happened to their business, that they would be able to rebuild. So kind of feels like a no-brainer to me.
I will open up public hearing. See if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case. May come forward at this time. Seeing that there are none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are you ready to act?
Sure. Case PB 2024 9-1, the request for a major variance from the side yard setback standards at 1180 Lesko and 1224 Gornell Roads. I would like to make a motion that we grant the major variance and that we attach the findings as laid out by the planning office.
Do we have, we have a motion by Deb Terrell? Or we have a second? A second by Chip Roarum? Any questions, comments? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Roarum?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Wax?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
The variance is granted. One more. Oh, Jose Arturo Barajas?
No, Beverly.
Oh, Beverly Hood. You had the top. Welcome to my second meeting. Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The variances are granted. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nugent. And that case will go before city council?
Since this is a variance, it was granted by the planning board.
Okay. No other action needed. Thank you. Next case PB 2024-9-2. A public hearing for a map amendment to rezone 295 West Hickory Street from the R1 single-family residential zoning district to the R2 two-family residential zoning district. Will the applicant please come forward? Good evening. If you could state your name, please?
Yeah, my name's Steve Stick.
And if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could tell us about your case, please?
Yeah, so I'm here representing Riverbend Property Withholdings. They purchased this home as it was actually a three-unit building. They are aware of the variance in the zoning change and they are willing to do the modifications and renovations to move it from a three down to a two unit. They understand the need for residential housing in the city of Kankakee. They're willing to do the work and comply with all the zoning and the regulations. There's also going to be a variance for the parking on this, which they did perform the surveys and there is room for it on the north end of the property. And so, yep, that's why we're here.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question on the improvements. Could you share with us any of the improvements onto the building itself that you consider?
Yeah, so when the building was purchased, it had recently had new windows done, new vinyl siding. They're going to upgrade the porches and then they're also going to do full modifications of both the lower and upper units, which will be divided into two units. That's going to be full kitchen modifications and renovations, bathrooms, bedrooms. We will unfortunately have to go into the third unit. So there would be some structural changes there, but they will be upgrading all the utilities and everything in the property in both units.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a question about the access to the upper unit. How do you access the upper unit?
Yeah, so the access to the upper unit would remain the same. So in the front of the building on the south side, there's currently two entrances. One entrance goes directly upstairs and that would remain the same. The lower unit has a door next to it, which goes right into the first floor. And there will be two accesses to the lower unit. The upper unit will also have a secondary access out and that would be through a back stairwell, which also has access to the basement. So both units will have access to the basement. Both units will have two entrances or exits as well. So the entrance will remain the same for the upper unit.
Question. Could you tell me what the entrance at grade on the west side next to?
Yeah, so the entrance on the west side that goes, that is a stairwell that currently has access. It goes to the second floor and the first floor as well as the basement. So that's a stairwell that will go, that goes into, joins all units.
Okay. And the second access for the second story, is that the one that comes in off the northeast?
Correct.
Side in the back?
And then that porch will be, it's an older wood deck, which will be completely redone.
I'm unclear about the variance for the parking.
It's not a variance for the parking. It's, I think he said that, but we will have to grant them an administrative variance for lot area because that's undersized, but it's within the 10% threshold.
So it's a minor variance?
Correct. We have asked them to provide the four spaces on the property, so we do need to talk about that tonight. I kind of put in some potential thing. We have a survey to look at to make sure this would work. So I think the discussion tonight's important for that.
Okay.
With respect to the, Mr. Chip Roarum, with respect to the parking area that shows three parking places head in to the east and then one along the sidewalk along the side of the building and running north and south. What wearing surface do you plan for those spaces?
Yeah, so we plan, so currently there is gravel there now. It's all overgrown and has weeds in it. But we were hoping for gravel. However, that, I mean, the owner would be open for discussions if that needed to be changed.
I'm just going to give a reminder for the court reporter that you announce your name before you speak.
And if you could use your mics, too, please. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Is there a drawing here for the parking?
So there is one in the packet that looks, that's the aerial, Deb. And then we just received today the platte survey that shows, that would show you dimensions for that discussion as well. When I did my quick dimension in GIS, it looked like there was between about 31 to 33 feet of space between the back of the building and the property line. But now on the survey, I ran a number on it before I came tonight and it shows 34.04 from the back of the building to the property line. But I think that one of the things that I've noticed here is that access to the second story. So we want to make sure that that's being taken into account as well.
I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, we're not storing cars here. We're parking where people will be coming and going at different times. So is there opportunity for each of the four cars to be moved without another car having to move?
Well, I think the code requires two per unit. So if he's going to have two units in the building, there needs to be two off-street parking stalls on the property. We did talk with him about the potential to request a variance for that. But I think at the time, we were still waiting on the survey and staff really wanted them to provide the parking on site.
Okay.
Along those lines, Chip Roarum, again, along those lines, you can see with this diagram that shows the parking places, that the parking space that runs north and south encroaches somewhat on the approach for the parking space that is the southernmost parking space. And I worry that somebody pulling head into that might just back up and not pay attention and ram the end of that car if it were allowed to stick out almost a full parking place into that.
That's what I was wondering, too, oh, Deb Terrell, is how that third one down was going to get out because they couldn't go through. They'd have to back out. And if there was a car parked in this other space, I just didn't see how that was going to be easy.
I think this is pretty conceptual. I'm just going to talk this out since we have a survey. And this platte is calibrated with this dimension of 34. So I think the code requires nine-foot-wide stalls. And so that's what, 27? Is it 27?
Yes.
And then I don't know the dimension between the edge of the building and the sidewalk, the one that is the access point to the second unit. But it looks like, I mean, to me, it seems like there might be enough space to fit that and even pull it down some.
Chip Roarum, I think really what we're talking about on that north-south space, if we pulled the space to the south.
Correct.
It still left room for a sidewalk to access that exit to that side entrance on the west. That we would solve that conflict problem with one car backing into another.
Yeah, so eliminating that space?
No, just pulling it forward.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we could absolutely do that. And I guess, and I apologize for my ignorance in this. They can't, the parking spaces all have to be open. They cannot be stacked, being two units. Is that correct?
Yes, they cannot be stacked.
So, yeah, we absolutely can do that. And there is enough room to do that.
Any other communications regarding this case?
Staff did not receive any communication from any neighbors.
Okay, then I'll open up public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case? Sam Boone, we'll go ahead and close public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions or are you ready to act?
If there are no further questions, I'm ready to act.
Okay.
Regarding case PB 2024-9-2, a request for a map amendment to rezone 295 West Hickory from the R1 single-family residential zoning district to R2 two-family residential zoning district. I move that we recommend to city council that this be approved with certain stipulations. One stipulation being that the parking lot surface be made in asphalt and that the parking on the west side be pulled forward to avoid a conflict with the parking facing east. And that parking or sidewalks that connect the entrances and exits to the building be repaved in concrete. Furthermore, I would like to see the standards used to evaluate the amendments attached to this case and also include the recommendation that staff has to move forward on.
Can I chime in real quick? On a rezoning, you really can't attach conditions. However, they can be attached to the variance, which they have to do. So you could direct staff to attach those.
To the lot area variance?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, thank you, thank you. All right. So may we do so?
Yes.
We direct staff to address those issues? Of paving and parking and sidewalks? Thank you. Thanks for the correction.
Is there a second?
Barry McCracken, second.
We have a motion by Chip Roarum and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions, comments?
I'm sorry, I still have a question.
Can we go back as well? Because I think to make the record clear, I think I'd like Chip to amend his motion to just be the approval since he stated that there would be conditions and then we had a second on that. I think it would be clearer if we amended that, but yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem. Chip Roarum, I would like to amend my statement to refer the stipulations to the staff for processing and remove those stipulations from the record.
Okay. And Barry's?
My second.
Okay, so we have an amendment to, the motion to this case by Chip Roarum and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Oh.
We'll go back to the main motion in a second.
Okay, sure.
We're good, no questions?
No.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Roarum?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Wax?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Amendment is passed.
You forgot me again.
Oh, Beverly Hood. Gosh.
Next time.
You're going to give her a complex.
I am. Yes. The amendment is passed.
Okay. So we're going to go back to?
So back to the motion. Yep, that is now on, there was a first from Chip to grant, to recommend approval to the council with no conditions. And to direct staff to add conditions to the variance.
Okay, and we can still use the second by Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
This is Steve Case. I have a question, but Deb, did you have a question as well?
Well, it's about the parking, so I have to wait until we do this motion and then I'll address it.
Well, this is, I guess I'm not sure procedurally where this would go or this would just be a note. I would just note that when we do add that parking, there's one tree on the property and we'll lose that tree. And so I would just point out there's no trees at all on the terrace. So I don't even know if this is something that we can just raise to the city council that we would like some trees planted there if we're going to lose the only tree on the property.
Good idea. I believe the alderman in that ward can request trees for the terrace.
Okay. So I guess we would like to bring that to the alderman's attention.
Yeah.
They would be able to move the owner of the property to water it, too.
Sure.
Correct?
Yeah, I think that usually is when a tree is planted in the terrace.
All right. Any other questions? There's no other questions.
Any other questions?
Not about this, no.
Parking?
I thought we were voting on the motion that's on the table.
The motion on the table is to approve the map amendment.
Right.
There, so if you have questions on the parking related to the map amendment, then you would need to talk about that now.
Oh, okay.
They did not apply for a variance on this, on the parking.
Okay.
So they need to be compliant.
I thought it was going to be an administrative variance.
For lot area.
From the amendment. Okay. All right, here's my concern. Looking at the photograph at the bottom of page four, I can see the gravel driveway going into the area where the three cars will be towed in to the front there. However, the parking space that we decided should be pulled south so that the one car could back out and so that they wouldn't be covering up the sidewalk going into the entrance to the building, that's going to be like basically a car sitting in the side yard. And I don't see where they're going to back out. It's a one-way street. They're going to be backing out to the, well, to the right on this picture and then traveling left. Is there going to be another driveway for that car?
I think they may, they will probably be able to back into the drive some. The parking stall, the back property line is 55 feet deep. The parking stalls, if they put them to the back of the property, would be no more than 20. So they'll have some backup, I think, on the site. We'd have to look at it. We really haven't had a chance to look at this from a survey standpoint. And again, the applicant is aware if they're not able to provide this on site and it meet all of our codes and requirements, then they would have to come back to you for a variance request.
All right. I just wanted to bring that up because looking at this photograph, I just don't see how that car floating around in the side yard out there is going to get in and out without having a 40-foot driveway. That's all. I just wanted to raise that concern.
I don't know, did the applicant want to address that?
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I would also say, based on the survey, is that after the cars are parked, there's still going to be an additional 30 feet to be able to back into that. And yes, there is a one-way street. But I feel like there would be enough clearance to be able to back in and pull out, either back out or pull out at a three-point turn with the amount of space that will be still left over in that.
So basically, that whole side yard is going to be paved?
No, it only goes about, well, so it'd be about a third of the way up the building.
Across the sidewalk that goes into the door?
No, the door, the sidewalk, based on the previous request, the door, we would make the sidewalk go around.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And we even have an option to bring that sidewalk going directly south as well.
Okay. I see.
What would make, what would make the most sense is to run the sidewalk parallel with the house, either north or south or both.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding the parking situation?
Barry McCracken, so what would happen with this other existing sidewalk that's there now?
So that existing sidewalk there is probably going to end up being asphalt for the parking.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, given the space, it would encroach into the new parking. into the new parking.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we addressed that.
Mike O'Neil?
Mm-hmm.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Roerim?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
I'm not clear what we're voting on at this point.
There is a, there was a motion by Chip Roerim to recommend approval of the map amendment to R2, to the city council, requesting also that staff, directing staff to attach the require, the conditions that he had laid out previously, which was that the parking has to be asphalt. The parking should be pulled further south in order to remove the conflict with the northern parking stalls and that the existing sidewalks be repaired, reconnected, and poured in concrete.
Thank you. Yes.
Is that it? Yeah.
Yes.
Attaching those to the administrative lot area variance. And then we had a second from Barry, and then we had a little bit of discussion, and now we're doing roll call on that.
Thank you.
Are you a yes?
Yes.
Beverly Hood? Yes. The map amendment is recommended for approval.
All right, so case PB 2024-9-3, a public hearing for a map amendment to rezone from the R1 single-family residential zoning district to the R2 family residential zoning district, and a major variance from the minimum lot size requirement for a two-dwelling use in the R2 two-family residential district at 661 East Station Street. Now, to my knowledge, this case was going to be continued because the applicant did not publish the public hearing notice in the newspaper at least 10 days prior to the hearing?
Correct.
So, this case will be continued. However, I will open up public hearing in case there's anyone who wants to speak on this case.
You could ask the public if.
Okay. So, if you could state your name?
Yeah, my name's Dustin Coy. I'm actually the property owner of 408 South Dearborn.
Okay. On the next case.
Yeah.
So it's, I, yeah, we're not on that case yet.
I apologize. Sorry. Never mind.
So, as I stated, this case is going to be continued because the applicant did not publish the public hearing notice in the newspaper at least 10 days prior to the hearing. However, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing in the event that there is someone here that wants to speak on this particular case at this time. And seeing that there are none, if I can get a motion to continue this case to next month?
Yes.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell?
Second.
A second by Steve Case. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Roerim?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The case is continued to the November planning board.
Okay, next case, PB 2024-9-4, a public hearing for a map amendment to rezone 408, 440, 450, and 466 South Dearborn Avenue from C2 Service Commercial to C3 Central Commercial or R1T Single Family Residential to R3 Multi-Family Zoning. The city of Kanki is the applicant?
Correct.
Okay.
We received a request, the property owner from 408 South Dearborn is here tonight, but he had requested from staff, he had been interested in rehabbing the building at 408 South Dearborn. And when staff completed our land use analysis of the neighborhood, we realized that the three properties to the south of this property are existing multifamily buildings that have been existence for quite some time. They are zoned C2, C3, and R1T, which is something we've seen in other areas of the city. And so when looking at the potential for rezoning the one lot at 408 South Dearborn and it potentially causing some spot zoning and whatnot, we, we looked at these areas as, we looked at the whole neighborhood, actually, but this was, these are the only ones that were really multifamily in this area. The, the rest of it is, is pretty spotty with, with single-family and, and two-unit. And staff had internal conversations and we spoke with aldermen about the area, and there was support to do a city-initiated rezoning in just these five parcels here into the R3. The one thing that we didn't do, which is what is kind of similar on other rezonings initiated by the city, is we haven't really, we didn't dive in real deep on setbacks or lot area, things like that. So if these properties don't meet those things, those applicants would have to come forward in the future to make those lots completely compliant. But as far as the land use is concerned, staff is supportive of those, at least the three buildings to the south becoming compliant from a land use perspective, and then helping for this property to be able to be rehabilitated. And then the property owner is here for 408, so if you have questions for him specifically. And then he's also, we have that discussion topic on his property on the next item on the agenda, so he's here as well for that.
For both?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll go ahead at this time and get your name for the record.
Yeah, again, this is Dustin Coy.
And if you can raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, if you want to go ahead and tell us about your property?
Yeah, so I own the property of 408 South Dearborn. Currently, you guys might, might know it, it's been a funeral home for years. It's been vacant for, I don't know, 20, 25-plus years. But currently, there's two apartments on the second level on either side. And right now, it's downstairs completely commercial. I want to convert the whole building into seven apartments, so a seven-unit building. Did you, did she share the drawings? Did you share the drawings with them? Does anyone have any questions about the drawings themselves?
So I think we can, the printout that came to you tonight, the, the drawing is not in full condition. The, the PDF from Friday that was sent out does have the full drawings. And I have a slide, but I would like to finish the discussion on the, the map amendment first, and then we can go to that next item for the, to discuss the floor plans.
I have a question on the map amendments. Chip Roerim?
Sure.
The, the, the building that's there at 408, we need to address any setback issues or encroachments at this time on that property in order for it to proceed as a seven-unit building?
Well, he's, I guess the thing is, is that it would not be, I mean, the building itself currently is not legal, you're correct. It's front setback, is that what you're saying? The front, potentially the front setback?
It looks like it's in the front yard.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And, I mean, I think from a landlord's perspective, the multifamily zoning will allow him to proceed with the construction because I think that he's just doing internal rehab. But I think you're not, you're, I think in order to proceed with what he's trying to do right now, yes, but he, he would likely need to come back for variances potentially to make it completely compliant.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to bring that up to you, just two steps.
This is Steve Case. Just a quick question about the lot, just to the south, the, the parking lot?
Yeah.
Is the plan just to keep it pretty much the same? Or what's, what are your plans there?
Right now, that parking lot probably serves 30 to 40 parked cars. I mean, I have a seven-unit building, I do not need all that space. The plans are to convert half that into green space. So that parking lot runs all the way up to the adjacent building. And there's no need for that giant asphalt parking lot for my needs.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. What was your plan to do with it?
Well, right now, it serves about 30 to 40 cars, probably, once rehab. I want to shrink that to about half that size, so I want to have 14 to 15 parking spots and to convert half that parking lot to green space.
To green space?
Yes, yeah.
So more permeable surface?
Yes, exactly.
I like that.
I also think, Chip, when we talked with Dustin when he came in the first time, and we, we were just assessing whether or not the city would even be comfortable with this initially, but I think we also noticed when he brought the floor plans in as well, I mean, I have not reviewed a plat yet either, but the, the apartment square footage was brought for question two, so he may be back for that variance as well, so, yeah.
Would you be keeping that portico that jets out into the front setback?
Hmm, talking about the overhang, correct?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, that's to be determined, I haven't gone that far yet, so. I believe right now that's like a major staircase for the funeral home. It's a very wide staircase. We might convert that into like a level and make that more living space. So that entry might go away on that side.
Barry McCracken, so Dustin, the next building south is owned by somebody else?
Yes.
Where does your property line end?
It, uh, from where you look at the map, the GIS map, I haven't had an actual survey on the property yet, but it looks like it borders right.
Okay, okay. So all the parking space would belong to you and not?
Yeah, yep.
Are they currently using that parking area?
I think everybody in the neighborhood's using that parking lot. So, yeah.
This is Steve Case. Again, I guess that raises, have we, have we, maybe you mentioned this, have we heard from the other owners of the property?
I spoke, so there's one owner of all three. I did speak with him. He, the only concern he had was that the, he didn't want his taxes to go up. And so I had a, a brief conversation with him about, you know, zoning versus assessed value based on the use of the prop, the land, and told him he could contact the assessor's office if he wanted, you know, further clarification. He was very aware of the, the meeting tonight. I thought maybe he might show up, but he did not. So, but that's all the communication I've had with him.
So he's?
Yeah, he owns all three.
He's a local owner?
He lives out west of town in the county.
Okay.
Okay, so again, we're addressing the request for a map amendment to rezone those properties that I've already mentioned. I'll open up for a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case, you may do so at this time. Seeing done, I'll close public hearing. Commissioners, are you ready to act? Are there any other questions?
Madam Chairman, Deb Terrell, in the case of PB 2024-9-4, the request for a map amendment to rezone 408, 440, 450, and 466 South Dearborn from C2 Service Commercial, C3 Central Commercial, and R1T Single Family to R3 Multifamily Zoning, I would like to move that we recommend approval of this map amendment. Apart from the findings that are attached by the planning office, which I would like to cite but not read, I would also like to say that I, I like the idea of a building that's been sitting there empty for 25 years come to some good use. We do have a dire need in this community for housing, and I love the idea of less concrete and more permeable space, so I'm going to hold you to that.
Okay.
Throw in a couple trees, Dustin.
No problem.
So that's, that's my motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Deb Terrell. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Steve Case. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Roerim?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The case is recommended for approval to the city council.
All right, thank you.
Any questions, are you going to go over the?
We're, we're getting ready to go to the next item, which is the discussion on a potential variance request from the minimum floor area per dwelling standard for 408 South Dearborn. There will be no action on this case, just a discussion.
I can briefly go over this, the, again, the owner, obviously, he's here. When looking at the floor plans that were presented to, to staff preliminarily, the, one of the units, there's a number of units that are under 800, but they're within that 10% threshold, it would be administrative. And again, in this case, because there is one that's pretty significantly under, I would probably go with whatever the plan commission recommended with this. So if they were okay with this one, staff would also support the small reductions. There's a few units, I'll go to the floor, the floor plan. So there's a few units that are around 780, 740, and then you can see this is the, it's a one-bedroom. It's not a studio, right? It's a one-bedroom?
Yeah, it's a one-bedroom.
That's the 600 square feet.
If I could comment, like, 800 square feet, that's a good-sized two-bedroom apartment. We've done similar projects in the area already in their existing structures. We had one-bedrooms that are 550 square feet, and plenty big for a one-bedroom apartment. So I believe like this requirement should apply to like a bedroom count, maybe not necessarily just a unit count, because a one-bedroom, a 600 square feet is quite good If you noted, the two on the second floor are kind of pre-existing, so we can't really change the one that's 780 square feet, and the 1,200 square foot one on the second floor is also pre-existing already. Everything on the first floor is going to be new.
I guess I'll chime in real quick. When we were making some amendments to the code a while back, we did look at unit sizes, and I did present you some information that suggested that a range probably is a good idea, because you're right, 600 for a one-bedroom is a pretty substantial one-bedroom. 800 is probably a decent average overall, right? But I think going down, allowing some smaller units would make sense to, to accommodate, particularly to accommodate a renovation like this.
Yeah, it makes sense that affordable housing has to be smaller with today's building cost and.
Yeah, going from a seven-unit to a six-unit on this project, I mean, it makes it a lot, a lot less attractive to myself to complete the project, to be honest with you.
So he will have to formally apply for that variance because it is a major variance, so we'll see that request come in the future. And then we, it would be probably a good idea for us to get a plat so we can verify setbacks on the property at the same time, ahead of us coming back through for those variances.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, the purpose of this discussion right now is not an action on our part, but just a survey to see how we feel about reducing?
Correct.
So that he can move forward?
Correct.
With the assurance that he has some backing?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm going to go on record as saying I'm comfortable with these square footages.
Anyone else have any comments or feelings one way or the other?
Barry McCracken, Dustin, the, the one-bedroom, what is the size of the bedroom?
Ooh, I don't have, I mean, it probably says on there.
And I can't see the numbers here.
I would assume at least a 10 by 12, or 12 by 12, something like that?
Ooh, sorry.
11 by 10.
Oh, that's good.
I'm so sorry.
There you go. So it'll be down? So it'd be down...
Is it, it's the other one, this one right here?
So eleven-by-nine?
Yeah.
Eleven-by-nine-foot-ten?
Too, so. In each unit, I don't know if you guys noticed too, we're also putting washer and dryers in each unit, which isn't common. So rather than a common laundry area, we're trying to put laundry in every single unit there.
Good. Wow, that's really nice.
And they're all going to be heated and cooled, too, so we're going to have mini-split systems in there, like heat pumps, so.
Nice.
I have a bit of a challenge getting your, getting from the parking lot that you're going to build to some of the entrances of the building.
Yeah, there's going to be maybe one or two rear entrances, but also they're going to have to come around to the front, so.
All right. I didn't hear from anyone else. So I assume everyone is in agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, shoot.
So everyone seems to be comfortable with this. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
All right.
You're good, thank you.
Thank you. Old Business Case PB 2024-6-2, public hearing, a conditional use permit for a restaurant drive-thru, and a major variance from the parking requirements at 344 to 352 West Court Street by Adam Boggner. Good evening, Adam. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And if you could state your name for the record?
Adam Boggner.
All right, if you could tell us about your case.
So this is on Court Street, Kitty Corner from CVS, you know, where the old labor union hall used to be, and the old, I think it was a Chinese restaurant, kind of that, that corner. Looking to do a commercial building. More than likely, I would expect two food places in there. Would be in agreement with the staff on doing, you know, off-peak hours. Our thought would probably be shooting for a coffee shop and then a lunch place would be our, our thought. Of course, we would take an office or anything like that as well, but it's just probably less likely. Would have a drive-thru.
Okay, questions from the commissioners?
The first question that comes to mind for me, Deb Terrell, is, are we vacating the alley or no?
No.
No, the city doesn't want to vacate the alley, but the, the city, at least the administration, is comfortable with the parking arrangement that he shows there, and we would just allow them to have access to those spaces off of the alley directly.
So where it says alley to be vacated is incorrect?
It will not be vacated.
Okay.
But the layout will be exactly what you see here.
I thought you had said that the alley wouldn't be vacated.
Correct, yeah, no.
Saying that the valley isn't vacated, or alley isn't vacated, not a valley, an alley isn't vacated, what's the, what's the typical relationship for the care of that? I mean, it's municipal property, but...
Yeah.
...has parking lot.
Right, the, the, well, the drive aisles, if you want to call it that, would be the city's responsibility to continue to maintain, and then he would maintain the parking spaces.
Because the parking spaces are actually off of the alley.
Correct.
Right. But it obviously cuts through.
So as long as the specs, we're in unity on the spec, that's not a problem?
Another question that I had, in looking at the site, I noticed that in what would be your drive-through lane? Now, I'm not sure where I'm at here. No, no, it would be on the alley. The, the existing building that's there has a number of utility poles that are so close that they almost appear to be attached to the building with tons and tons of wires coming out of them. I don't know what those utilities are and who they serve, but how do you move something like that?
Those, most of those, I believe one of them is on there, will stay intact. Yes, tho, most of those will probably not get moved. They will end up in a, in an island or not. They won't be in a parking spot, obviously, but I believe there's one on the back end.
Yeah, it looks like there's at least two, one near the front of the building and then one near the back section.
Those will land in the, in an island or in the grass, in the landscape area, but they won't actually be able to be removed, because they do feed multiple things in that block.
Well, I, I guess I wondered too, you know, something that, that I'm noticing a lot here in town that's been kind of concerning to me is that we have so many utility poles that are leaning, almost falling down. Many of them that I've seen are actually only being supported by the building that they have fallen against. And so I'm wondering if this is an opportunity to bury those utilities or to at least get new, new utility poles and have this aging structure. I mean, they're just, they're ready to topple over.
So Deb, it is really expensive to bury utility poles like this, like that would, if you...
Who would have to bear that cost?
Well...
My memory is like fifty thousand, like, per pole?
Yeah, it's super expensive.
Really? Yes.
Okay, then.
Yeah.
Go fund me.
We can certainly talk to, to the utility about keeping the poles in good shape and maybe replacing them, but I, there's no way that we can make them bury them.
I guess I'm just seeing an opportunity here to correct something that's a problem.
I just, yeah.
This is Steve Case. Adam, a question just about the, I guess, the east, no, I guess that was the western side of the property. That building's going to come down, and parking spots are going to go there. Are you, but you're going to keep that separate from the parking lot that's already there to the, farther to the west?
Only because of the alley. So the alley will, will cut through. Is that...
The St. Mary's lot would remain to the west. Is that what you're saying, Steve?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, you're, you're going to have these parking spots on the, you're going to have these parking spots on the side of the alley, right? Are they just going to tie in with this parking lot that's already here, or are you going to, are you going to have this green space sort of separating them from, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you tearing down the existing building and building a new structure there, or are you rehabbing it?
We would be tearing it down. So there's, you know, everything to the east of the alley is just vacant. It's actually three vacant lots, and then to the west of the alley, there's a structure, and that structure would come down.
Okay.
Yeah, which was that yellow.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, see how those utility poles are just like lying against the building there? Right, right, they are going to fall down. [laughing]
Melissa, Chip, I have, I have a question on, on the parking load. I mean, right now, MG2A is declaring that we have one space for every four hundred square feet, and my recollection is that the load for parking on a restaurant occupancy may be greater than that?
Our, so, Mike did the review and prepared this case before I started, but I believe the restaurants are ten spaces per thousand.
Yeah.
Which are, well, like, one per hu, a hundred, which is the same thing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the number calculation on that site plan is wrong, but the, the table that we have in the document on page six of the review is correct.
Okay, I, I saw a discrepancy there, just wanted to point it out.
Yeah.
Oh, I see the question.
I guess while we're talking...
Oh, I see, one per four hundred, yeah.
Yeah, so just to clarify our suggestion, right, our, you know, we would be concerned if you had two lunch restaurants or something, because then you could have a parking issue there. And, you know, that St. Mary's lot next door is pretty full most of the time, so we want to make sure that we're avoiding problems in the area. But if they're off-peak hours, we think that the shared parking formulas will work just fine, and it's generally okay, so we're okay with that.
Have the conditions been reviewed with Adam, the staff recommendations? Have they been reviewed with Adam?
He, he sent them a copy of the review, and it sounds like you're okay with the recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
Barry McCracken, question, so the proposed building, I didn't do the math or anything, did you say, was it a one-story or two-story or...
One-story.
One-story?
Yes, yeah, two units.
I mean, with the right tenant, you could have one unit, one to one tenant.
Hundred percent.
With, you know, with a pickup window and, and more modern versions of something, which would offset your loss of parking.
For sure. And that, that's, you know, we just want to know, you know, obviously, that would almost be best-case scenario.
Right.
But we also want to know if we're going to dive into endeavor this size. We want to make sure it's covered that, you know, if we had two...
Sure.
People wanted seventeen hundred square feet or whatever the number, you know, that, that could work.
Any other questions, commissioners? Public hearing is open for this case. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case, you may do so at this time. Seeing that there are none, public hearing is closed. We've got two items to vote on, a conditional use permit and a major variance. Commissioners, do you have any questions or are you ready to act?
I have one other question on landscaping. Would this be something that would be covered in the future, but I would, I think we have landscaping requirements that...
Yes, we do.
Yeah, the footprint changes enough that it kicks in.
Yeah, it'll have to go through site plan review, and that will require a landscape plan.
Mm-hmm.
All right, point out details.
Hey, are we ready to act on the conditional use permit?
Yes. On case number PB 2024-6-2, a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-thru, recommend that we recommend it to City Council with the attached standards of evaluation for conditional uses that have been provided by staff.
We have a motion by Chip Warren.
Chip, what about the conditions recommended in the staff report? Are you attaching those as well?
Um, I had, uh... Okay, the standard conditional uses and, and the, the staff recommendations regarding suitability for the conditional use permit, yes.
But there are six added recommendations.
There's conditions, right.
Right, those recommendations. I'll read them in if you like. One, all requirements of the City of Cankey Key Fire Department and the City of Cankey Key Code Enforcement Division shall be satisfied prior to commencement of the business operation. The applicant shall obtain, two, the applicant shall obtain a City of Cankey Key business license prior to the commencement of the business operations. Three, the development will generally be consistent with the attached conceptual site plan prepared by MG2A. However, the applicant shall submit a detailed site plan, paving, drainage, landscaping, et cetera, to be reviewed through the city's site plan review process. Four, the applicant shall provide appropriate wayfinding signage that directs users through the alley. Five, the applicant shall install a six-foot privacy fence to be approved during site plan review on the southern property line to provide a buffer between the subject property and the residential property to the south. The application shall provide a trash enclosure, six, the applicant shall provide a trash enclosure on-site to be approved during site plan review. And I want to add one, that lighting will stay on-site and will not encroach upon the properties of adjacent properties.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Steve Case. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
I'm sorry, I'm going to abstain.
Chip Warren?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The conditional use permit is recommended for approval.
The next item is major variance from the parking requirements at 344 to 352 West Court Street. We have a motion to approve this? Or a motion?
I'll give this shot. Regarding, this is Steve Case, regarding case PB 2024-6-6-2 for a major variance from the parking requirements at 344 to 352 West Court Street, I make a motion that we, pardon me, I lost my place, that we grant this variance. We recommend approval of the major variance with the following recommendations, that no more than half the building contains restaurant use, or that if both tenant spaces contain restaurant uses, restaurants have different peak demand periods.
I'm going to ask you to restate that. I think this would be granted by the planning board, correct? I think you said recommended for approval, so we're going to say, yeah?
So we would be granting this?
Granted.
I recommend that this major variance be granted, subject to the following recommendations, which I just stated.
I would say conditions.
Conditions, thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second. Chip Warren.
We have a second by Chip Warren. Any questions, comments?
Actually, sorry, but I thought of something as we were discussing this, right? If it was one single restaurant, I don't think, the first condition says if no more than half the building contains a restaurant use. Well, if it was one restaurant, I don't think it'd be a parking problem, because you don't have the, the multiple peak thing that you would have with two separate restaurants. So a single restaurant for the whole building would probably be okay.
So I should, should I amend the conditions such that we say, as long as the building does not contain two restaurants?
Yeah, or i, if, if two or more...
Or if they're both restaurants, then the restaurants have different peak demand periods?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I think that would be better.
Should I start all over again?
So the, the motion is to grant a variance to reduce the parking down thirteen, are we going, I mean, Mike, is that what's on, being requested, is the reduction down to, like, thirteen?
That's right, correct.
I mean, that's what the petitioner is requesting?
Yeah.
Right, is, um...
You know what, you probably should leave...
To have two... To have two, you still would like to target two restaurants? That's your, that would be like your...
Yes.
So I think what Mike is saying and what's been recommended here is either the planning board is going to grant a variance for that, because there could be support in this room for two restaurants, or, I don't, was there still a variance needed, Mike?
Yeah, actually, well...
If it's a restaurant and a retail, and it meets code, I think it was like a reduced down to two or something, but I don't know if that's under the 10%, we may not even need a variance.
You know what, we should probably leave it the way it was originally written, now that I'm rethinking this, I'm sorry to confuse you, let's just leave it the way, well, I would suggest you leave it the way it was originally recommended. If there was, if it's a situation where you came in with a single tenant for the whole building, you could always come back in and apply for a different variance if it was necessary, if it didn't comply with this.
Chip Warham, because if it's two restaurants, the load's still 10 spaces per...
Yeah, it is, it is.
The floor plan may change, because I don't know what our code says for...
Yeah, I mean, part of the space might be storage or some other things.
It could be a different floor area, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So we would be, we would be granting the major variance with no conditions, then? With, we would be omitting these conditions that...
No, I think we're, I think your original recommendation was the correct one, which was the parking variance with those two conditions. I confused you, I'm sorry.
All right, so then my...
So it's really just, I think what it says here is you kind of pick one, so either it's the planning board doesn't, I think if it's one, Mike, it doesn't apply, it really is, there's no variance.
Correct.
Because that means the planning board's not supportive of it, so if you're supportive of it, and you're okay as long as he has balanced hours, then it's approval of the variance with the, oh, sorry, with the condition that both tenant spaces have off-peak hours, basically.
Yeah.
Is that what the planning board is...
Which is what...
Okay with?
That's what it reads in the...
It does?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Both restaurants have off-peak hours? They have different...
They have different peak hours.
It would be different, not two off-peak hours.
They have different peak hours.
Right.
So no more than half the building contains a restaurant use, or if both tenant spaces contain restaurant uses, the restaurants have different peak demand periods.
We don't, you can't read the first one, though.
Okay, so is...
I think what Mike, yeah, and I think...
Yeah, just, just do the second one.
Number one probably shouldn't be in there, yeah, because if number one, if number one was the case, then you wouldn't need to grant the variance, because if the planning board wasn't supportive of it, if it was a balanced, if it was a retail and restaurant use, what Mike was saying is it's, it pretty much meets code, it's pretty close, so he likely would not need a variance for that.
Okay. So we had a motion on the floor from Steve Case.
Is your motion to approve the variance, or recommend approval, or approve the variance with the condition that both tenant spaces contain restaurant uses?
Yes.
And that they have different peak demand periods?
Yes.
And that's your motion?
Yes.
There you go.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chip Warham. Deb Terrell?
I have to abstain.
Chip Warham?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The variance is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case PB 2040-7-1, public hearing for a used car sales lot at 490 West Station Street by a Head Start Steve Allen to be continued. Looks like the applicant's not ready to present to the planning board, and the staff has not received any cost information or any information related adding lots to the application. Staff has spoken with the applicant, who has requested the case to be continued to the November meeting. So I will go ahead and open public hearing, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case, you may do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the case, and if I get a motion to continue this case till next month.
So moved.
Second, Barry McCracken.
A motion by Deb Terrell, and a second by Barry McCracken, any questions or comments? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warham?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The case is continued to November. Other business? Motion to adjourn?
Thanks, Mike, for guiding us through, sharing your time.
It's been a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, period, adjourned. And if everyone could give us just a couple more minutes before you take off?